And good morning and welcome to the skinny for Friday, August 23rd. I'm Mitch Perry, senior political reporter for the Florida Phoenix, joined as I am every week by my two co-hosts, Ray Roa, the editor in chief of Creative Will Fing Newspaper and author and independent journalist Ben Montgomery. Good morning, Ray. Good morning, Ben.
Hey, good morning, Mitch.
Good morning, Mitch. How are you?
Hey, how's it going?
Did you sleep after the DNC?
Uh, I didn't get much sleep all week, you know, I've been to the DNC, I wasn't there this week, but um, yeah, if you get all excited, watch it, it's kind of hard to go to sleep at the end of the night, uh, but we-
What did you see? What did you notice?
What did I notice? Um, well, obviously, there was a lot of joy, right? It was the key word there. But um, you know, I was just saying to you, Ben, before we go on the air here, I think that Kamala Harris yesterday really, uh, at the end of that speech, really kind of um, was a very, it's pale and decentuous at the very end there, you know, with the talk about having a strong military and patriotism and, and Democrats not giving that up to Republicans they have historically. Uh, and uh, I think if the um, of the message in terms of the perception of her being very liberal, if that can be uh, obliv- um, obviated during the next seventy-four days, then I think she has a good chance, but the polls are extremely close today. And you know, we know Donald Trump is going to be supposedly getting an endorsement from RFK Junior and despite the fact that he's been very diminished in the last, I think, few months of this campaign, hey, just a couple of points, you know, in this race with this poll, you know, still close. But by the way, we're going to talk um, in the show later, you just heard on the down and dirty talking about this whole proposal from Ron DeSantis's Department of Environmental Protection to build golf courses, lodges and pickleball courts on state parks, including a couple here in the Tampa Bay area. We're going to talk about that later in the show, but first in studio right now, we have Hillsborough County Commissioner Pat Kemp, who was also a Democratic candidate for Congress in Florida's Congressional District 15, which encompasses parts of Hillsborough, Polk and Pasco counties. Commissioner Kemp, good morning, welcome to the skinny.
Thank you, thank you. I like being here.
So, uh, great to have you here. And of course, you've had a long association with WMNF uh, over the years. So seventy-four days before election day, but before we talk about your congressional candidacy, there's a lot of stuff going on in Hillsborough County Commission.
Oh.
A lot of stuff, a lot of funky stuff. Um, let's go to the top. News broke this week, well, this has been in the news the last several weeks, this whole back and forth between whether we'll have a tax referendum for the school district, uh, and I think that's going to happen now, right? That has finally been decided.
It's on the ballot, so they can't take it off, but they can still appeal it.
And they being your four county commission Republican colleagues.
That's right, Republican colleagues on the county commission.
Why do they not want it on the ballot?
Well, I think you'd have to ask them.
And I guess, I'm sorry, Pat, maybe we should tell people first, what is we talking about?
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, okay, sorry. So actually, and we should say in context, there's going to be two referendums on the ballot in November. The CIT, uh, we'll get to that in a moment. So that is something for the voters, they're going to have to decide on, obviously. And then also the school district coming back, they had a ballot referendum, was it just two years ago or was it four years ago? Guys, do you remember what it was?
I think it was four.
Oh, but that was uh, that was not this.
That, okay.
Wait, I don't think it was this, it was a, it was a different ballot measure.
This is for the school district that will basically salaries and for uh, other staffers, it's not for infrastructure.
For salaries and for teachers and for staff. It only, the legislature and their cruelty makes it for four years only. And by the way, there's kind of a ministerial obligation on the part of county commissions to the school board, and they had to fight it all out, whether they were going to get, put this on the ballot or not, under pressure by people, uh, some, some sources. Uh, and so they voted to put on the ballot, they come to us and there, there's an obligation, we go through and, you know, put it on the ballot, why that exists, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Uh, but you know, some others, I understand that, like Craig Latimer's office, uh, can independently just add something to the ballot without getting the county commission's approval, yeah.
Okay.
But so this would be half mil um, in uh, in tax dollars added. Property taxes. For four years, that's it.
That's it.
Um, and here's, here's, so it would raise staff and teacher salary. Here's just a couple important points. I'm not a school board member, I'm not enmeshed in all this. I fought for that really, really hard. And the reason I fought for that is because Hillsborough County, as I've discovered as a county commissioner and uh, seen uh, the intersect of the schools in this, uh, you know, and education in Hillsborough County. It, we've been really cruel as a county to our school system. We have starved them, we've starved our transit system, we've starved our school system. And there's a lot of things said, a lot of innuendo made about uh, our schools. Our schools have suffered more than uh, any, like any of the other counties, we, we have something called developer impact fees and they go to schools. And when I was a county uh, aide at the county commission to Kathy Castor in two thousand and three to two thousand and six, it was around two thousand and five, and she started working on this, it took a whole year. The developer impact fees were a hundred and ninety-six dollars per unit. Now, that may not mean anything to you, I wouldn't expect it to. But if you went to all the surrounding counties around, I mean, I'm talking Pinellas, I'm talking-
Pasco.
Pinellas is kind of an outlier because it's all built out, so they don't have to deal with this pounding, blistering growth and everything. But if you go to like Pasco, Polk, Manatee, Sarasota, lots of uh, counties around the state, but especially the counties around us at the time, okay? Hillsborough was a hundred and ninety-six dollars per unit and the other surrounding counties were uh, four thousand dollars per a unit. That was the difference.
So we're talking about if a builder is, say, building an apartment complex?
Well, apartment complexes are a little, probably less, it was like based on them.
Building a house.
Yeah, like four, that's a, I'm doing average too.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it was like four thousand dollars per unit in other places. And that's the only way you can deal with this blistering pace of growth. If you're a slow growing uh, community, you can, you know, add on and handle it and everything. But I mean, the, when you have thirty thousand people a year coming, you, you cannot deal with this any other way except to have developer impact fees that pay for the impact of expanding your infrastructure. Roads, sewers, parks, uh, fire and police and schools. So it was a hundred and ninety-six dollars. It had been, uh, these impact fees started in around nineteen eighties in most places. In Hillsborough County, we had not, uh, and I could tell more about that, but I won't go into it, but we had not raised our impact fees basically since nineteen eighty-three, they, they sat there. All the other places, every three years, they would have a study to get, to tell you what, you know, you needed for that. You would uh, then uh, implement the fees at a hundred percent or whatever, but this is what the other communities that were less pounded than us. That was for capital, that was so one thing. Um, and we made that up to some extent by the CIT, which we'll talk about later and, and that, but this is for uh, operating. So our schools have been uh, what Kathy did is she went from a hundred and ninety-six and they got it, it took about a year to get it to parity with the other counties, like four thousand dollars, but it was stepped in, it got stepped in during the recession.
Yeah.
And by the way, when I came back to the county commission, it was at four thousand dollars and the surrounding counties were at like eight thousand and nine thousand dollars. So anyway, I carried that mantle in twenty nineteen.
And we should say that when you ran for reelection in twenty twenty, the developers came after you hard. Uh, you were running against Sandy Merman, who was a former commissioner coming, trying to come back to the commission there. Uh, and they spent a lot of money to try to make, to throw you, uh, and they were unsuccessful. Okay, so that is going to be-
But let me just say this, so this, that was all talking about capital, sorry for the distraction, but it's part of what has happened. Um, so what this is, is operating money.
Right.
And it's really insane that the uh, legislature makes people vote on this every four years, but our surrounding counties have all done this without a problem. It gets passed, they get the money. Now, on top of that, so they're, they're getting that money in our surrounding counties without a problem. Nobody's saying, oh, dear me.
Reflecting higher wages for teachers.
Yes, yes, oh, dear me.
And making Hillsborough less competitive.
Exactly, and not only that, um, the um, uh, the Florida, and this, this is under DeSantis and it's so cruel. Florida is fiftieth in the nation in teacher pay.
Right.
Do you, I mean, I remember twenty years ago when they used to say, I've been around a while, they used to say, um, thank God for Alabama, Mississippi. How else we be last?
Yeah.
Well, you know, we are, we are fiftieth, fiftieth in the nation in teacher pay.
And do we know where Hillsborough ranks in Florida's sixty-two counties?
No, I do not know exactly, but the other counties are in way better positions and why wouldn't somebody go to Pasco to have a cheaper-
That has been the argument for the school district.
Right, and I think ten percent or so of the school vacancies.
So Pat, I want to move on from that.
Oh, by the way, I just want to say that the mileage is a full, a full percentage, not a half percentage.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you for that, Ray. Yeah, so that is going, so that's one of the issues on the ballot for Hillsborough voters. And again, they can vote, yeah, up or down on that, obviously, but you're just giving them the option to vote on that.
Right, exactly.
And now also, we want to talk about the CIT or Community Investment Tax, which uh, first course came out in nineteen ninety-six, I believe it was. Uh, and people, longtime listeners will remember in this community, that uh, basically it helped build Raymond James Stadium, uh, but it also had a lot of other things in there, twenty-five percent for schools, libraries, the Tampa Art Museum, roads and bridges, Lowry Park Zoo, fire stations. So we knew this was going to come up, uh, everybody knew that, it was coming back up and it's up and uh, you guys voted on it, but instead of a thirty-year, um, you know, redoing that for thirty years, it's only fifteen years. And the big story here, it seems to me anyway, going back to the schools, is that you got twenty-five percent, the CIT did for the last thirty years, it's only going to get five percent going to the school district to keep up with infrastructure. Um, I was reading John Hill from the Tampa Bay Times, he wrote last Sunday, quote, "There's no political commit-" oh, oh, this is what he's saying, okay, so you, and he's concerned that the CIT may have a problem getting passed now, because of course, there's going to be a lot of things people are going to be looking at when they vote in November, but this is a big one here. And he was saying, right now, there's no political committee behind pushing the CIT, there's no messaging in place and no seeming coordination among the agencies that stand to benefit. So uh, but that is something that is going to be on the ballot and I guess you're a big proponent of that, I would think.
Yes, uh, you have a private group usually that is doing that lift to bring those around. Now, this is on a presidential year.
Right.
Uh, where uh, you know, you have more voters out particularly.
Yeah, you know, I mean, like, let's get going here.
Right, right. Well, I don't think there's going to be any lift, it doesn't seem from any private group out there. Uh, we can't put it on the ballot again for four years. I was, I fought and fought to have it not reduced from twenty-five percent for schools to five percent, uh, again.
What was the argue, I mean, you know, we don't have some of the, obviously, Republicans in the room here who would argue, but I know you were in the room when they made those arguments. What was, were they saying, why, why five percent?
They were hating on schools, they were hating on schools. I mean, yeah, yeah, they don't care if the public school system is destroyed in Florida. It's kind of like a model and we're ground zero in a lot of ways here. So um, you know, uh, I just, it's, it's abhorrent. They were pulling up all this uh, stats about schools and how uh, poor they were performing, which, you know, it's just out there. We're not in there to be arguing that, but I just, I find it, you know, the need is greatly there. Um, when it reduces it from twenty-five percent for schools to uh, five percent, then we're um, we, we do have other huge needs. Actually, one of the needs is the stadiums, we can't just, those stadiums are built, they are owned, actually, they are owned by the county.
That's wild to believe that, because it doesn't seem like the county gets as much benefit out of that as uh, the team, you know, the private owners of it.
Well, they have to be. Um, that's our stat, tax structure and everything, they have to be. So they are county facilities. But you know, and a lot of people can, and I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how the financing is everywhere else, but I think there are entities everywhere else that, you know, uh, work this way or states or whatever. But um, they also provide, you can think about just the teams, but think about Taylor Swift.
Lot of money, lot of money comes in.
Well, if we didn't have, though, if we did not have a facility like that available, we would not have those kinds of concerts, events and uh, you know, things going on here. So, I mean, you can, uh, you know.
There's a good argument for it, for that case.
Right.
We should tell people, if you're just tuning in right now, you're listening to Pat Kemp, she's a Hillsborough County Commissioner, has been there for the last eight years, she'll be uh, term limited out in November, but she's trying to keep up uh, her public service career by running for Congress and we'll get to some questions about that in a moment. Um, let's talk about affordable housing, because that's actually, want to talk about that on a national level too, about your candidacy for Congress, but obviously here in Hillsborough, like the Tampa Bay area overall, like Florida, like the country, we all have a huge issue with affordable housing now. I was reading about, let's talk about workforce housing, which is maybe a little bit different, because it's a little higher income than affordable housing, but I saw the story last week about how Tampa General Hospital has purchased this uh, five acre parcel on Delaney Creek Boulevard in Brandon, and they've already secured ten million dollars from the state and the county has uh, quote, provisionally earmarked two million dollars over the next four years for the project, with those funds going to building uh, a daycare facility, I believe it is. Um, preliminary plans also show a dog park, community pool and children's playground. Uh, you guys going to vote on this, uh, I think, coming up, right?
I don't know when we're voting on it. I mean, I've just read about it, I've been totally supportive of, of affordable housing. Um, we, Hillsborough County itself had never put its own resources into affordable housing. I made the motion to do that in twenty nineteen when we finally had four uh, Democrats on the board. Um, and we got that ten million dollars a year, it was pushed by Hope, which is a, a groups of churches, a, you know, I go to their uh, meetings every six months, they have a thousand members of like twenty, thirty, I don't know how many different churches come, and that was their primary uh, goal, was to try to get more affordable housing for us. So we did ten million dollars for four years. Um, and then we had extremists come in now, they were ready, three of them were ready to cut it, to zero it out. Three of them were right, argued that, to cut it out, although um, uh, one commissioner, Cameron Cepeda, did not say anything. Um, but she had actually lived, uh, per the times, Tampa Bay Times, she had actually lived in uh, Hillsborough County Affordable Housing when she was running as a commissioner and after she became a commissioner, was earning too much money to continue living in those. Um, so she was out, but she actually voted against, without saying anything, voted against um, affordable housing, as did Commissioner Owen and Commissioner Wastle. Commissioner Wastle has called it, he said, "For those of you who know the Bible and understand the commandment, there's a commandment that you may not be familiar with, but it's thou shall not steal," and that's what affordable housing is. Um, so that, that was at the meeting from the desk.
Let's just bring to that, um, about that.
But anyway, we, we ended up doing two million, which I thought was a pity.
Yeah.
Um, so we have two million a year, a pittance, right? Uh, we have two million a year, um, and, but that, but in the time that we had the ten million, the two million will, it's leveraged, it's not just two million in project. But as I understand, the count was, you know, that we had done something like up to, I think, two thousand uh, places that we provide extra that would be, you know, affordable.
What you have talked about, just in this discussion here, is about the fact that county commission went Republican a couple of years ago, twenty-two election, Hillsborough went red in this huge uh, Republican year of twenty twenty-two, and we'll see what happens in the next couple of months here. But obviously, that has a real effect on, on the ground here, on some of the issues that you had been working on, this county commission, this Democratic-leaning county commission had, I guess, in the first six years that you were on the board, uh, and you'll be leaving that now, but, but obviously, yes.
For the first two years, it was five Republicans and there was a lot of six to one votes.
Eighteen to twenty-two, basically, you're talking about Democrat, okay, right, okay, right, so thank, good clarification there. But nevertheless, yeah, I, so again, it tells people, and we've got, I guess, what, three, uh, your seat, of course, you're leaving your seat, uh, that's going to be an open seat, District Six, um, we'll see what happens.
In North District Two, which Ken Hagan has been in for many, many years, there's a woman, Patricia Alonso, who is running for that seat. She worked as a teacher, she worked as a social worker at Moffett, um, and I think she's a extraordinary person.
Right, right, so we'll be watching out for that. And as Ray, as Ray mentioned here, Pace uh, came up for discussion, I guess, on Wednesday, right? This is the, the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, which offers financing options for energy efficient home improvements. You led the effort to kill this in twenty twenty, uh, and Governor DeSantis signed the legislation that, that hoped to improve oversight. So what has been the problem with Pace? It sounds on paper like it's a good thing.
I can talk about it forever, honestly, it's so complex, right? But here's the thing, only three states allow residential pace, by the way, California, Missouri and Florida.
Well, California sounds like, you know, where I come from, that would be an honorable thing.
You know what, Los Angeles County was one of, is one of the, I think it is the biggest county in the nation, they were one of the first ones to jump on a pace program.
Okay.
And um, and I have fought this, uh, we, we had it for a while, but anyway, I've, I've fought it over and over again. It's a zombie program that keeps coming back because it's sloshed, full of money with lobbyists, pouring money all over anybody who votes for it or does it or supports it, they have more money. Um, but anyway, the-
So is there corruption there? What's wrong with it?
Well, here, Los, let me just tell you, Los Angeles, in Los Angeles, they were the first ones, one of the first counties to do it. They did everything to control the program and make it so it wasn't a predatory financing program that would hurt people and have them lose their homes. They did everything, they had, you know, all kinds of guardrails and guidelines put in place. They hired staff to monitor and everything, and they finally just gave up. And that was the last time I fought it, like a week before. Los Angeles County said, no, we're not, yeah, we're not, we're not doing this anymore because the cost of us doing this. And by the way, it's done with the stamp of Hillsborough County, with the stamp of government. They say Hillsborough County agreed to this, you know? It is a terrible program. Um, for one thing, it is, I had forgotten about clean energy, they took out the solar panels, which I'm just, even though I'm a huge solar panel supporter and uh, clean energy, renewable energy, I was glad they took it out because I think it really hurts the reputation of solar panels, because people find out what happens when they do pace. So what happens with pace is you have these contractors or contractors, salespeople, they go around knocking on people's doors. They target low-income neighborhoods where people own their homes, they target places where there's uh, Hispanic, uh, you know, Spanish-speaking people that don't understand. They actually have an iPad and they get you to sign off on the iPad and you do not know, they tell you, you don't have to pay anything. Okay, you're distressed, you have this bad roof, your air conditioning is broken, your whatever is uh, you know, going down. And they, they say, oh, you know, and people believe somehow, because they want to believe, I guess, whatever. Um, you know, they're, it's, it's, you want to have something happen, that's good. This is, this is Hillsborough County, which isn't our program, it's their program, but they get to put this on the tax bills. That's an incredible privilege to be able to get on the tax bills, because what that means is they get their money no matter what. So they sell this program, they might sell a roof, they sell it for like, you know, five times what a roof would cost, do a bad job, throw it on the tax. The people don't realize, and I showed three examples on, on screen on Wednesday, um, from Jacksonville, um, people don't realize that, so they might have on their little house that they even have paid off, they might be paying six hundred dollars a year taxes, seven hundred dollars a year taxes. They get hit with their first tax bill, and we had Nancy Milan, the uh, tax collector, it's, forty-nine people are now uh, ready to enter delinquency from the old pace program that we had, uh, but uh, they, they go from six hundred dollars to four thousand dollars a year for thirty years for their uh, roof, for their air conditioner. They're uh, you know, ripped off by the contractors, they're, and it's not even-
So it sounds pretty bad.
It's horrible.
So what happened on Wednesday?
No one should use it.
What happened on Wednesday at the vote? Or it was a discussion, it wasn't a vote?
Yeah, no, 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 we had a vote, um, it's pretty much moving along.
You had many votes. There were many votes on, on Wednesday.
A bunch of motions and everything and they didn't fly. They, if they want to do their contracting and go out and do this, just don't put it on people's property and make them not, they don't understand what's going on and they can't, they're not covered by the Fair Lending Act, the Federal Fair Lending Act, which would, you know, truth and lending.
Do you know the, the DeSantis legislation that was-
Yeah, it's fake.
You don't like it, okay.
Let me ask you a couple of questions real quick in the context of that. You know, there's a lobbying report that shows that Joshua Wilson has been pushing for pace to be revived, along with Christine Miller, another commissioner, were visited by a pace funding lobbyist. Have you been visited by a pace funding lobbyist to talk about the changes?
No.
But what they're saying is that there could be oversight now, right? Uh, that it's new and improved. How confident are you in any improvements?
A big zero, a big zero. It is just going to be a way for people to lose their money. There's improvements that they could make, but they're not even making, I don't think they say they, well, they give lip service to it. I mean, before, we had a woman who was not um, uh, intellectually, I mean, she, she had issues, she was a homeowner at home alone. This happens all the time, seniors, elderly, she signed on an iPad, she didn't even know what was going on and then her family found out. But guess what? If you're not under the Truth and Lending Act, you don't have, even have a financial recourse, you lose your home. You lose your home and people all over Florida are losing their homes. Mike Fasano has talked about it, he came on in, on Wednesday too, and talked-
Yeah, in Pasco, I think three hundred people, according to Axios, endangered.
Mike Fasano for years, I didn't know what pace was, but I know he's against it, you know, big time.
And you know what, it's, it targeted, it targets the people that will definitely lose their house. Anybody who has investments in their house and can afford to get help, they can get an equity loan, they can do something else that won't be predatory.
Okay, Pat, we're going to, we're move on, because we want to talk to you about your congressional race, but we also have a couple of phone calls here, uh, so we're moving along here, because we also want to talk about this proposal with the state parks here, so uh, we're at, it's eleven thirty right now, if you're just tuning into WMNF, the skinny here on eighty-eight point five, I'm Mitch Perry with Ray Roa, Ben Montgomery, and our guest, Hillsborough County Commissioner Pat Kemp. And speaking of lawmakers, local lawmakers, former Tampa City Council member John Dingfelder is with us on the phone here. John, good morning.
Hey, guys, good morning.
You just can't quit.
No, I was-
Haven't I heard you here before?
I left the station, I'm listening to you guys every day, every week on the, on the phone, but I did have a question for our good friend Pat. Uh, Pat done a great job at county commission, you're running for um, for state, uh, US representative. But when you talk about affordable housing, it's very difficult, as you know, for local governments to address affordable housing alone. I heard Kamala Harris yesterday-
Yeah.
Say that the federal government was going to get in more involved and solve the affordable housing crisis. Um, do, do you have any feedback from Washington or from the national Democrats on what the federal role might be in terms of uh, affordable housing? And I'll, I'll bail out, you guys-
Okay, thank you, John. I can tell you this, I don't know, Pat, if you know that, I know, I've written it down here, some of it is about giving uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in down payment for first-time home buyers, that the plan is for three million new housing units over four years, with some folks, I was reading an editorial in the Washington Post, that that's going to be pretty hard to do.
Well, yeah, but go high.
Well, right, I mean, but there's a, well, federal low-income housing credit program, which has been around for forty years, according to the Washington Post, and they've built only, you could say, three point six million units in that time, that's in forty years, that's the federal government. She's calling for three million over four years. So, you know, we'll see what happens.
It's going to be, it's going to be ambitious, but you know, it's, it's a need that we have. Yeah, and at the same time, we have, and I hope we do something about this, um, you know, we have, again, uh, just speculators and everything, and especially strong in cities like Tampa.
Buying of homes, there's a new story in the Tampa Bay Times about this.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't even get a chance to read it yesterday, I really am anxious to read it, because I've been talking and thinking about this for a couple of years. I found out a couple of years ago, ten thousand homes have been bought up by these private guys-
Right.
Uh, in Hillsborough County, in just Hillsborough County. Now, can you imagine with that, how that skews our housing market? And what they do is they target homes that are in good school districts with three bedrooms, two baths, they go and they buy it out under that, you know, nobody, a home buyer never even gets a chance, they offer the bigger money.
That is a huge problem. I wonder, I wonder how government, if they, if that, you know, you can't intervene in something like that.
I know, and I'm not sure, but I think they're looking at kind of tax penalties for these companies that, oh, uh, which I, you know, I would like to see something like that, a sin tax on it or something.
Let's go, we've got another phone call, by the way, we've got Sandy calling in from St. Petersburg. Hi, Sandy.
Hi, do you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I wanted to ask, um, Pat, are you concerned about the discouraging of black community participation in the electoral process? As we're seeing with this federal case going to trial in Tampa in September, where three leaders of the UHura movement are being falsely accused of being secret pawns in a Russian conspiracy to sow discord and interfere in elections, because they ran candidates for local office on a reparations platform and spoke out against US funding of foreign wars. So, you know, Kamala has a type of political career in the sixties, registering black voters as a field organizer, so a student on voting coordinating committee, and now sixty years later, age eighty-two, they want to lock him up for fifteen years for pure political speech. September third, the case is starting in Tampa.
Right, yeah, no, thank you for the call, Sandy. Uh, any, any thoughts about that?
I don't know the particulars of that case, but I have strongly always been an advocate for free and fair elections. I mean, if they're going to lock somebody up for uh, coordinating with Putin, I mean, I think we have a target candidate at Mar-a-Lago.
Well, by the way, this is a, a positive news, I think, we can all believe this on what happened Tuesday night, uh, some of these, I don't like, you call them election deniers or what have you, integrity, um, voter integrity groups or candidates, they lost mostly across the board in Republican primaries, including in Pinellas County against Julie, um, I'm sorry, who was it?
Julie Marcus.
Julie Marcus, thank you, yeah. Uh, and then one of these guys, Billy, his name was Billy Christensen, is running against Craig Latimer in November. And this is, Tuesday, it was Republican versus Republican, right? And these, uh, and anyway, the incumbents held serve, basically, on that front. So Pat, we just have you for maybe like five, ten more minutes here, so want to get you on some federal issues, okay? So you're running for Congress and let's be, let's get, talk about this, this is Congressional District Fifteen, which is, like I said earlier, Pasco, uh, Polk and Hillsborough here. It's a, it's a district that every couple of years, you know, I know it's been changed around a little bit with the configuration, but basically, you know, Democrats always think they have a chance here. And, and I was looking at this the other day, um, and the breakdown is, um, it's tough, it seemingly, for me, for a Democrat to win this. I know you know this, you're, you're out there competing for this, yeah, what we see, hundred sixty-five thousand Republicans, um, a hundred and forty-one thousand Dems, a hundred and twenty thousand NPAs. Laura Lee is the incumbent, and by the way, we've asked her to be on the show and hopefully we'll, we'll have her on uh, before the election. Um, a lot of excitement as we were talking about getting the show with the Democrats, obviously, with Kamala Harris replacing Joe Biden. Um, how's, how's, how's the campaign going?
It's going great, and it isn't just a reconfigured district, it's a new district, it is a new district. It was the district-
We gained the new district in twenty-two.
Right, and that's it. They, and so it's, it's not really the configuration that it ever was before. Um, if the district had existed in twenty eighteen, DeSantis would have won it by one point. If it existed in twenty twenty, uh, Biden would have lost it by three. Twenty twenty-two, I, that's the first year it actually existed, it was a horrible year. Um, as you know, actually, five men competed in that- Actually, five men competed in that primary, Alan Cohen won it, it was just a terrible year for any of our-
Democrats got beat up on question board.
Okay, so 65% of this is in northeast Hillsborough County. I'm a countywide county commissioner, I've been on the ballot five times, I've been on the ballot five times in that area, and four of them won by more than 5%. And so, you know, I'm known to some extent there, in that area. Another small part goes up into Pasco and another small part in Polk, it goes right through the center of Lakeland. People conceive of, conceive of that as being, you know, these being-
Red areas.
Red areas, but let me tell you, you know, I was like looking at the map and someone had said to me, oh, you're west Lakeland, you've got the poor area of Lakeland, like they said it like, you know, in, in some way that-
Derogatory way.
Yeah, kind of. And, and I said, yeah.
Yeah, Democrats leading probably.
Right, and I saw a map where it was like all blue.
Okay.
And I was just like very happy, but I went over to join with the, actually, they had a virtual meeting of the Polk County Democrats that had been moving around, and this was all before Kamala.
Yeah.
And someone said, well, you're only gonna get 10, 10 or 12 people are only gonna be on that virtual meeting, you know? And I joined in, and I don't know, it was back in June or something, and 50 people showed up, and they were super organized, and they were raring to go. Who knew? The other night, I went up to meet with the Zephyr Hills Democrats, who have been around for a long time, they had a lot of people there. I've met with women's caucuses all around the district. I met with an East Pasco Women's Caucus the other day, and the room was packed, and they were all wearing cat shirts. I mean, people are, are really furious and fired up. Laurel Lee has been the first person to occupy this new seat, and I should add in there too, I knew that only lean slightly Republican, we've got USF in there with 40,000 students.
If they ever vote, you got a chance.
No, I know how they vote, and I, I was at the university in 2004 as a lawyer there, and they had a limited number of machines and everything. On presidential years, university students come out, they get, it's non-presidential years that are a difficult thing. But anyway, they will be voting-
So you're bullish on your chances here, you really think you have an opportunity?
Oh, well, let me tell you more. So they've added even, as you go, like if you just go up 275 on Bush Boulevard, you might see on your northeast corner, a big apartment building. That was affordable housing apartment building done with Hillsborough County dollars, I believe. It's like six stories high, it's really big, that's the district, that starts the district all along Pasco, where they're building the apartment buildings and townhouse units, those are all in this district because it's just a slight line across the district. If you go up to Zephyr Hills, there's what used to be an agricultural road there at 54, I think it is, probably just five years ago, it has these massive apartment complexes and townhouses that are going in there. Those, those places vote primarily Democratic. But I did a poll, I did my first poll because people were-
Internal poll?
Yeah, nonbelievers.
Right, skeptics.
Yeah, and, and I wanted to, you know, I paid a lot of money, it was totally legitimate poll, whatever. So I had a poll done, and it was done, it was done, the last day of my poll was the last weekday that-
Joe Biden.
Joe Biden was the nominee.
That was Friday, July something, or 20 second, I think.
And then after that, on Sunday, you know, Kamala took the, the reins, but my poll ended on Friday, and I was just like, oh my God, did I waste my money? What happened here? When am I gonna find out? And on Wednesday, I got my poll results. And on Wednesday, what I got is Pat Kemp at 47%, Laurel Lee at 48%, abortion passing at 61%, recreational marijuana passing, I mean, abortion at 60, recreational marijuana at 61. And this is a new game and a new day, and now we have Kamala, and now we have the college students, and these kind of polls, they, they take in, they don't take in voters that have never voted before, they don't take in the youth vote or anything.
Right, because you need that, right? Because, because, right, because if it's likely voters, people, like you said, the college students, then it's probably gonna be a little worse for them. Are you, are you gonna debate Laurel Lee at any time? Has that been set up at all?
No, um, well, I went to Tiger Bay the other day, and I had like the five people that were really out there.
Someone running against Kathy Kastner's law, I believe.
Yeah, the people in Kathy Kastner's race, plus the people that were in Laurel Lee's race.
The Republicans in that race, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there was like five, and the bar was so low that I felt like getting up and going, I love America, I believe in democracy, like I should just repeat that over and over again, you know?
But hopefully we'll see that, though, I mean, you get a chance with Laurel Lee.
Well, in Plant City, both of us went there for three minutes each. I don't think it's gonna happen.
You don't think so, okay.
No, no, and, and, you know, I, my experience has been that that doesn't happen in the past.
Incumbents don't like to do that. Kathy Kastner never debates her opponent.
Well, I did see in the early on years, I've seen, I saw that, but you know, there's no reason for her to do it now.
I guess not.
There's just no reason.
Yeah.
Wouldn't make sense.
So we only have a few minutes left, Pat.
Yeah, I want to say this.
Yes.
Laurel Lee celebrated the overturn of Roe v. Wade, up until just a couple of months ago, she had that on her website, she might still have it to this day. I, I, I am, it's abhorrent that we overturned Roe v. Wade and that our, the law of the land now in Florida has been this cruelty and this destruction of our, our reproductive health system, doctors not coming here, doctors leaving, hospitals not doing this, women being threatened with death. And I'll just say for, I, I take it personal, you, I had, before I had a, my two children, who you know, that are now in their 30s, but before that, I had an ectopic pregnancy, I lived here. I did not know it for a while, I was in terrible pain, I was told I didn't have it. Afterwards, I went to a second doctor when I was in horrible pain and found out I did have it. I was rushed within 12 hours to Tampa General for emergency surgery. If I had not had that done, I could be dead. I would not be here, my daughter and son would not be here, my two granddaughters would not be here, they would not be with us. This is a cruel regimen, there is no reason for them to be looking at this, for them to be, you know, taking away reproductive freedom, taking away people's rights to grow their families, to make their own determinations about something so profound and personal. And, you know, be there with Tim Walz, mind your own damn business.
Yeah.
And, and that is how, that is how all these voters feel in Florida and in that district. And so I am, I am going to take her on for that. She also is very quietly dangerous in Republican leadership. She's, even though she's, she's not the crazy of, you know, lunatic over in, you know, Paula Luna, over in, in Pinellas or Marjorie Taylor Greene or Matt Gaetz, but she votes with them more than 90% of the time. When the voting split on Ukraine between the Republicans, she voted not to fund Ukraine.
Really?
Yeah, she's a Putin lover.
Well, I don't know, okay, I think we'll, we'll check on that. Pat, we have to, we'd love to talk to you last week.
And one other thing, she voted to keep George Santis when they split on that.
Oh, that's interesting, I did not know about that. Pat, well, it's great to have you in here, obviously got so much energy, and we look for, and this new poll that you're telling us, this internal poll is very-
I put it all over the place, but nobody seems to know, but there's also such a fluke.
No, I will, I will report on it now that I know about it, because this is, I would love to have a competitive congressional race to write about, okay? Please, desperate for that.
You've got it.
Pat Kemp has been our guest here, Hillsborough County Commissioner, and as you've just heard, she's running in Congressional District 15 against Republican Laurel Lee. Hopefully it'll be a very competitive race, she says.
Well, by the way, she did her own poll, I know that because friends sent me things, she never said, it was two months before mine, she never said a word about it, I think she's got the same numbers.
Okay, all right, we'll wait for that. So we're gonna transition now. Pat, thank you so much for coming in, we really appreciate that. So, Ray, I'm gonna kick this off to you now.
Yeah, for sure, as you may have heard on Down and Dirty Before, environmentalists statewide were rattled on Wednesday when the Florida Department of Environmental Protection updated plans related to a Great Outdoors Initiative. The plan would bring development to nine parks from as far south as Miami Dade all the way to the Panhandle. Locally for the Bay Area, Hillsborough River State Park could see up to four pickleball courts and a disc golf course, Honeymoon Island, four pickleball courts. Elsewhere in Florida, it's more dramatic, 350-room hotel at Anastasia St. Park, or State Park in St. Johns County, the removal of the, of an observation tower at Jonathan Dixon, where there is also a plan to build three golf courses and another 350-room lodge at Top Sail Preserve State Park. What's more is that the state only gave citizens about six days to prepare, to prepare for some in-person public comment that's happening on Tuesday. Here to talk about that for the next 15 minutes or so is Ryan Smart. He's the Executive Director of the Florida Springs Council, based in Gainesville, he's a water policy expert and the only lobbyist in Tallahassee whose sole focus is the protection of springs and spring-fed waterways. Ryan, we're not even in the session yet, yet here we are talking again. How are you holding up today? How have the last 48 hours or so been like for you? What's that?
Hey, Ray, thanks for having me on, it's, it's been very hectic. This was a terrible proposal that was really dropped on Florida at the last minute. This is, you know, for those folks who aren't really attuned in with how we do our park planning, minor changes to park plans, like the route that the tram will take to Itchituckne typically go through multiple public meetings over months with lots of public comment. So the fact that the state is trying to push through golf courses and 350-room, you know, resorts, they're calling them lodges, but you know, these are not lodges, these are massive resorts on our most precious and special areas. I think it, it proves that they know that what they're doing is wrong, and they were trying to avoid this kind of public opposition, and they've really stepped in it on, on this one, because not only is the public opposed, but in the last 48 hours, we have seen many, many legislators from both sides of the aisle, including some past and future Senate presidents come out strong, in strong opposition to this proposal.
Yeah, you're, you're a guy who sits up in Tallahassee for the whole session, you're knocking on doors, sitting in meetings with lawmakers. How many of them have you been able to connect with over the last few days?
Yeah, well, you know, we've had, I've been so impressed with the environmental community at large, because, you know, one thing about proposals like this is it affects everyone. You know, even if you don't live by one of these parks, everyone in Florida has probably had an experience at a state park, and many of them at these state parks. I used to live down near Jonathan Dickinson, it's a real treasure. When I'm over in Tallahassee, I go to Top Sail as often as I can, and I spend most of my time in Jacksonville Beach, where I'm going down to Anastasia. So what we've seen is local advocates, you know, not, not just people like me who are paid to do this, but by the, the tens of thousands reaching out to their legislators, to Governor DeSantis, to Secretary Sean Hamilton at the Department of Environmental Protection, and saying, this is a terrible idea, it's terrible policy, terrible process, and it needs to be stopped.
Thinking about the nature of these meetings all at the same time in the middle of the day, and you kind of mentioned this Max Chaznus, who was on John Dingfelder's show earlier, he spoke to Eric Draper, who ran the parks between 2017 and 21, he said DEP might be operating outside of the legal process. I hope to get to that, but I should say that we reached out to DeSantis's office for comment. Press Secretary Jeremy Redfern wrote that the DEP is looking at recommendations to enhance the Florida parks to make them quote-unquote "more visitor-friendly." He talked about multiple phases of public discussion. He said that these initial recommendations are based on public input, including the pickleball, golf, and he said that recommendations will be evaluated, no final decisions will be made until public comment and review process has been completed, adding, this is his quote, Teddy Roosevelt believed that the public parks were for the benefit and enjoyment of the people, and we agree with him, no administration has done more than we have to conserve Florida's natural resources, grow conservation lands, and keep our environment pristine. It's high time we made public lands more accessible to the public. I think 28 million people visited the system, according to the Florida Parks Foundation last year, 3.6 billion indirect economic impact. Ryan, do you have a response to Secretary Redfern? Does the park system have an accessibility issue?
No, I mean, I love, I love paddling, you know, if, if the state wants to go in and improve some of our trails, something they've been doing actually for the last, you know, few years, is putting more money into trails and rails to trails, on things like that, you know, if they want to provide more opportunities for kayaking and canoeing, you know, we're all about that. We think we need to get people out in nature, you're not gonna want to protect something that you love. But what they're doing here is, is destroying nature, you know, and I think that anyone who would call Florida's environment pristine has no clue what's going on with Florida's environment. 80% of our outstanding Florida springs are significantly impaired by excessive nitrogen. We have the highest percentage of impaired lakes anywhere in the country. You know, if you live in Florida, you see the development, you see what's going on, how it's taking out our woods, you see the impacts on wildlife. People have seen in the last few years what's happened to our manatees, which is largely because of, of water, you know, pollution. So Florida's environment is actually in a lot of trouble, and we put conservation lands aside, you know, for public recreation, but also for the ecosystem services they provide. It's incredibly important to be able to have lands that are filtering out the water, the nutrients, that are providing recharge areas and habitat. I mean, if you think about the big push in the legislature the last few years has been all about wildlife and the wildlife corridor. And while not all of these proposals are within the wildlife corridor, wildlife don't get a map of where the corridor is. They are going to use the public and conservation lands they have. So you take somewhere like Hillsborough River State Park in your area, you know, on its face, you might be like, well, is it really a huge deal to put in some disc golf courts and, and some pickleball courts? Well, yeah, it is, because you're gonna be taking out the remaining natural land that's in there that we need for habitat, for wildlife in that area. And you can say that about all of these. You know, these are, none of these proposals are geared for protecting the environment, you know, they're all geared to make someone money. I don't know who that is, but you know, all of this is just commodifying our state parks, and we bought these lands, you know, we as public citizens, I was born and raised in Florida, I paid my taxes, everybody else has, we didn't buy these lands so that some developer could come and put a resort on it, or come and put a golf course on it. There's like 1,400 golf courses in the state of Florida, and I have no idea how many hotels there are, but there's plenty. The last thing that we need is to take these very special lands, I mean, the state parks are the crown jewels of Florida. There's lots of conservation lands, we have state parks, we have wildlife conservation areas, we have state forests, and the idea is that each one of those lands has a different level of use associated with it. And state parks should be the ones that are the most pristine. Now, we have some state parks, especially some of the springs, where we've had to go out and, you know, buy out things that were already developed, and the state's working hard, you know, DEP folks, especially when Mr. Draper was there, to undo some of the development that was already at those places, to make our existing state parks more in harmony with nature. And we don't have anything like what's being proposed, proposed here today. So I mean, the destruction that would happen to Anastasia, the destruction that would happen to Top Sail, and the destruction that would happen to Jonathan Dickinson, you know, I have to wonder if the goal here isn't to deteriorate the conservation values of those properties so much that the state can just sell them back into private hands.
Do we know anything at all? This, this is one of the big questions that I have in trying to take a, a position on this. Do we know anything at all about who will be running these facilities and where the proceeds from these facilities go? It occurs to me that we do this all the time, we're liquidating public land. we do this all the time. We're liquidating public land. The city of Tampa has a handful of downtown parks that are basically not useful except as concert venues. I just wonder if, if it's too quick to sort of judge these projects without knowing how the money will be spent. What if it's to obtain more acreage or to preserve parks, parts of the park that are more sensitive, environmentally sensitive than other areas? Also, if you look at, in my mind, if you look at all of these projects cumulatively, they're not really taking up a significant percentage of the 813,000 acres that Florida has in state parks. The average 18-hole golf course, like 150 acres. So, if you look at five of those, 750 acres, you're still less than 1.01% of state park land.
Yeah, Ryan, I think you touched on that a little bit. But could you speak a little bit to that argument? Because I'm sure it is something that we'll hear on Tuesday in the public comment.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know that those acreage numbers are exactly correct. And, you know, is that state parks versus state conservation lands?
It's state park land. 813,000 acres of state, state park land, state forests and so forth, like other preserved land in the state is an additional 670,185 acres.
Right. And then you've got a bunch of federal land.
Yeah, sure. 13% of all land in the state is federally owned.
And all connected with the Florida Wildlife Corridor.
Right, right.
18 million acres in the Florida Wildlife Corridor is a big, significant chunk of undeveloped land. Or, you know, much of that is ranchland. And part of this, part of my thinking is, shouldn't we be more, shouldn't we sort of rally the troops around proposed roadways as opposed to these little nuggets that don't necessarily affect the corridor where roads building is, you know, in the state is crazy? Maybe we should oppose all of it, of course, if you're for the environment. But it just seems to me like such a small amount of land we're actually talking about here.
Right. But it's, it's, it's the most important land, you know? I'm sure you own property. And, you know, your property is going to be a very, very small portion of your city. But if someone wanted to come and take out your house, that would be very important. These state parks, you know, these are what belong to us. These are the very special places. You don't just get to be a state park. I mean, I don't know if you've actually had the pleasure of going to Topsail, but I encourage you to do it. And then I encourage you to imagine a 350 hotel room resort on that property. We don't have a lot of pristine beaches. I mean, I drive A1A all the time. It is condo after condo after hotel after hotel after mansion after mansion. Places like Anastasia and Topsail are our pristine beaches. So, if you, you know, you, you have to look at the number of acres we have just of that, right? When you look at Jonathan Dickinson, that's some of the most important scrub habitat that we have in the state. You know, we protect these conservation lands for specific purposes. And people who are way smarter than me have been doing this for a very long time. State has invested billions of dollars in this. And, you know, I think that our land conservation program in Florida has been the gold standard for the nation. I mean, we've won like four state park awards, I think, which is like two or three more than any other state. And that isn't because we've developed them. It's because we haven't developed them. It's because we've kept them in their, in their natural state. And, you know, what do you do with the critters and the habitat and the plants that are only where those golf courses are going to go? You know, what do you do with those beaches? What about the sea turtles? These are our most sensitive lands. And, you know, as much land as there is in conservation, there is a whole lot more land outside of conservation. So, if you want to build these things, it's not like there's a shortage of places to build them. We don't need to build them on the places that we've put aside to not have this. I mean, all of Florida is going to be developed except for the stuff that we conserve. That's just the truth. So, if we begin to develop the things that we have conserved, nothing will be conserved.
Sure. Ryan, with the next, last like three or four minutes we have here, actually three, two and a half minutes, you know, you're up in Tallahassee. You've had some big wins, protections for Wiki watching, whatever plays out here on Tuesday and the weeks going forward will be part of your life in the next session. Do you have any idea of the work it's going to take to beat this back? And how's it going to affect some of the other issues you had hoped to work on this year? You know, as Ben alludes to, you know, we have conservation easements that are now being opened up for development.
They're building on the east side of 75 in Sarasota County.
Yeah. How does this play into the environmental work? And could it possibly just be a distraction to overload the stuff?
Um, you know, I don't know if it's a distraction or not. I think it's, you know, this is way too big of a threat to call it a distraction. I, we are seeing in our state a push to turn our conservation lands into intensive agriculture, into golf courses, into development, into hotels. That is something that is, you know, maybe most important for us to oppose. I mean, as much as I want more conservation land, you really have to wonder how we're going to advocate for more conservation land funding if people know that once that's purchased, it's just going to go back into development and agriculture. To the first part of the question, I am incredibly optimistic. I have not seen a response like this from the environmental community and the public in a very long time. You know, when you have the number of folks in leadership in the legislature, like Senator Pasadomo, Senator Trumble.
Wilson and CFO Patronas both coming out against us.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, you know, this is a, I mean, how often do you see an issue where you have the most progressive people and the most conservative people that I work with, all reading from the same playbook, all singing from the same hymnal and saying, this is a terrible, terrible idea. You know, I, I think this is going to die on the vine. And if it doesn't die, you know, on the vine, then we will kill it down the road.
We might have a chance to squeeze in one quick phone call here.
Yeah, Darrell, you're on the air. You have 30 seconds here.
Yes. I've been a mountain biker for over 30 years. We helped put Alafia State Park on the map. People come from all over the world even to ride there and the importance of that. But I've been also paddled most of the rivers, have been a hiker, et cetera. And but when they talk about golf courses, 30 years ago, I fought against a lot of that because people forget about all the herbicides, pesticides, and the massive amount of water they use for golf courses, which affect the entire ecosystem and the surrounding areas. And they act like that's, it's inane. It's not.
Thank you. Thank you. Ryan, we hope, we'll put some links to the meetings, by the way, on WMNF.org. I also have some on Creative Loafing. Ryan Smart, Executive Director of the Florida Springs Council. Thank you so much for taking the time to join us. I hope we get to talk with you and some others after the meetings pass.
Thanks a lot for having me. And yeah, I really encourage everyone, we will have folks at all of those meetings an hour before they start to help, you know, organize and get attention to this. Find the meeting closest to you and please attend.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the listeners for listening to WMF Tampa. This has been the Skinny on behalf of myself, my co-host Mitch Perry, and Ben Montgomery. Irene Matthews back on the telephone. So good to see you through the glass there. Skip Sassy on the board. Please stay tuned. Art in your ears next. The hostess who loves you the most is blowing me kisses through the glass. Joanne and Shilky is here. Have a really good weekend.